Good evening, and welcome to the August 3 meeting of the Scarborough Planning Board. In case anybody is interested, we are meeting this evening in the library of the high school instead of our usual home due to the budget that is being voted on tomorrow. So with that, then we'll approach the call about the vote. Now let's, I'm sorry, let's stand and pledge allegiance. We'll put divisions to the flag of the United States of America, a sovereign public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, we will let the vote go.
Ms. Argles, you, Mr. Beale?
Yeah.
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Fellows?
Mr. DuPont?
Here.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
And Mr. Mazer?
Here. In light of the fact that Mr. Fellows is not present this evening, Ms. Argles will be a voting member. And with that, we'll go to the approval of the minutes of July 13. Where are your motion? Any discussion? You're in none or in favor? Now on to the agenda, which we have a pretty extensive one this evening. Item number four, Avesta Housing requests continuation of site plan review for Southgate House, 577 U.S. Route 1, assessment map U 34, Lot 37. Representative, how long you been doing?
Thanks, Mr. Mazer. So this item's on your agenda this evening really as kind of a work in progress, a continuation of the site plan review. It's labeled that because the project is also in front of the town council right now. This project requires a contract zone to, in order to move forward. The council had first reading at their last meeting in late July, and they're going to be considering a public hearing in second reading later this month, I think on August 19th. So the planning board can't approve the project until the contract zone is approved, but the applicant and staff felt it would be good to continue the planning board review so that you can continue to kind of work through any outstanding issues to ready the project for approval after council action. So, you should have in your packages received prior to meeting, planning staff comments, as well as comments from Wurden Curran, our peer review engineer, and comments from our traffic consultant, as well as our town engineer. Some of the highlights in terms of the comments, obviously access has been looked at pretty intensively. I had first few meetings and they're coming back with a proposed right-in, right-out treatment to kind of, to try to address access concerns. There's still a few issues to work out with the fire department in terms of fire lanes, the design of the fire lane to make sure it works for the fire department, and some turning radius questions to ensure that emergency equipment can get in and out of the site safely. There are a few other staff recommendations that I think the applicants prepared to talk about this evening, looking at parking requirements, just to make sure that there is adequate parking. This is a bit of a unique project for Scarborough. It's a larger apartment building and there's, it's largely one-bedroom units, so it's a bit different than what the town's been used to in terms of dwelling units, so are interested in understanding what Avesta's used to in terms of parking in similar contexts. And looking at sidewalk design, seeing if the applicant can get the sidewalk away from room one a bit in terms of distance from the curb, given that it's a highway travel really in that area, and a range of other kind of more engineering related comments, snow storage, stormwater design, things of that nature. So, that's really where the project's at, we're kind of trying to identify the last remaining, at least from staff's perspective, last remaining items, and advise the board as you kind of head towards potential improvements and final feedback on the project. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for the introduction. I will now turn it over to the applicant.
My name's Dan Riley, I'm an engineer with Sebago Technics, and we're representing the applicant with the civil engineers, surveyors, and landscape architects for the project. As Dan mentioned, we were last before you several weeks ago, with the preliminary plan that's moved out to the town council. We have received the staff comments that Dan summarized in the middle of last week. We've made revisions to the plans to address all those comments. Those will be ready to submit in a day or two ahead, so I'm prepared to answer any questions you might have specifically about any of those. The two though, that I think I wanted to start out with addressing are, or the subject really, our last conversation with the planning board and then with some subsequent meetings with the staff regarding access in and out of the site and parking. Following our last meeting with the planning board, we met with the city's peer review traffic engineer and the planning staff to talk about a number of different options that might address the left, specifically the left turn movements from northbound Route 1 across two lanes of traffic and into the site. Obviously, that's a concern for both the residents and for the town. After looking at a number of different alternatives and working through that in a fairly lengthy meeting with the, with the staff and the peer review engineer, I think we all agreed that the appropriate approach for this project, given its scale and scope and location, would be control turning movements in and out of the site, so that the site will be designed as a right turn in, right turn out development, that with the delta island would be constructed in the site entrance to prevent left-hand turns from turning off of northbound Route 1 into the site. After some discussion, that island has been shown on the plans, it'll be constructed with a hard drivable surface so that fire vehicles can roll over that median if necessary to come into the site with slow curving curve. In the latest comments, we've also added and included in that island pedestrian refuge, essentially, so the site, as a pedestrian is moving north or south, along the sidewalk has an island in the center of that entrance so that they can stop if there's traffic moving one way or the other. Regarding the sidewalk, we have advised the planners to pull that sidewalk away from room one to create an esplanade in between room one and, and the sidewalk. We've also, in response to the staff's comments, will include an easement for the town to maintain that sidewalk, as they do in other applications or other sites. Regarding the parking, when we were last before you, we summarized parking demand that Avesta's experienced in their affordable housing projects in Cumberland County. As we talked about in several meetings and presented to the council in a couple of meetings, we are proposing the project as a 50-unit affordable housing development. All of the units will be eligible for residents that are no higher than 60% of the average median income for the area, and the majority of the units will be less than that, ranging from 40%, 50%, or 60%. Typically, research and studies have been done across the country and Avesta's experience that residents of affordable housing projects generally own less, own fewer vehicles and drive, make fewer trips than a market rate housing project of the same size. So the proposal is 50 units, including studios, one-beders, two-bedroom units. We're proposing one parking space per unit with an additional five parking spaces on the site to be used for business. As we talked about last time, Avesta Housing and all of its developments controlled parking on their site with parking permits, it's written into the lease, and it's enforced through their management, so all the parking is controlled, so they have a good handle on the number of vehicles that are actually being used at their projects. At our last meeting, or just prior to our last meeting, we presented an analysis of several part, excuse me, affordable housing projects in Cumberland County that Avesta's developed, that included three in Portland, two in Westbrook, and one in Bridgeton. That information was reviewed by the staff, and they requested some, a follow-up to that with some additional information about those projects, their locations, and how they compare with the Southgate House project. We revised that memorandum, we did deliver it to the town late last week after we received the comments. I don't know if you've had a chance to read that or not, but I'm prepared to describe and walk through that. Essentially, the projects, after reviewing that and discussing it a bit with the staff, we decided that the three projects in Portland are, you know, an urban project, they're, they're located in Bayside and up the peninsula, they're close to walkable neighborhoods with public transit, so we've provided in that, in the memorandum, revised analysis that eliminates those projects. The remaining projects in Westbrook and Bridgeton, we think, are similar to the Southgate House, but as Southgate is a little bit unique to Scarborough, it's also a little bit unique to Avesta, in that Avesta has a number of projects that are urban locations and some projects that are in more, very rural locations, but not much in middle. So the projects that are included in that analysis in Westbrook are two projects that are located north of the downtown area, so on the north side of Westbrook. They are, one of the projects is between, depending on where you are on the site, is between 200 and 600 feet from a transit stop, and the other project is more linear, and so it ranges from about 400 to about 1,200 feet from a transit stop. That's a similar distance to where Southgate House is today, the existing transit stop at Dunston Corner is about 1,200 feet south. As part of the work we've done with the staff, the applicants agreed to provide funding or to physically provide bus shelters for two new bus stops that the town is pursuing with the transit provider. The town is working on the location of that with the provider and the property owners in the area, and I think the last communication we had was that the likely location of that site, it's just south of the former Dunston School, so about 600 feet from the site. So as part of the project, the applicant's going to be participating in a new transit stop that's in very close proximity to the project. What we found in the analysis, to boil it down, is that looking at those, the projects that we thought were the most similar to Southgate House, both in context, in terms of their location, but probably more importantly, the population that they serve, is that the demand ranged from about .7 parking spaces per unit was kind of the average of those sites, meaning for, if you just took the number of units times .7, that's the actual parking demand. So applying that ratio to Southgate House would say that the parking you would expect would be about 35 vehicles for providing 55 parking spaces. Some of the staff had some questions about some other Avesta projects in the area that were not included in the analysis, and when we approached this, we really looked at only projects that were income restricted. We didn't include projects that are age restricted or designed for residents with disabilities. Those populations tend to drive even less than a straight affordable housing project, and we felt that including those would sort of artificially skew the number lower than what the actual demand of this project might be. So the results of that are summarized in the memorandum. There are no real, or at least we haven't identified any real guidelines that are applied, particularly in Maine, for parking ratios at affordable housing projects. We did some research though, published studies that were done in other municipalities, we found a number across the country. The ones that were most applicable or most easily to drive parallels with this project were a project, that was an extensive project that was undertaken by San Diego, and then to a lesser extent, some changes that Alexandria, Virginia made. There were a number of other studies that were found, but most of those studies sort of approached the question more from the cost impact of parking on affordable housing, not so much the demand side of it. But what we found in those two studies were that the parking ratios that those studies identified were very much in line with what Avesta's experience is and what we're proposing. The San Diego model, if you will, looked at housing both from the standpoint of its proximity to transit, also based on income level and, and those factors, and applying sort of the worst-case ratios that they ultimately have proposed and adopted, are, those numbers still generate a lower parking demand than what we're proposing. If you apply that model to our site, it would say that the project should have 53 parking spaces where we had 55. Another study that was done in Alexandria, looked specifically at affordable housing and parking demand based on income, and it gave a sliding scale based on the resident's income, how much parking would be required, and applying that model resulted in .7 spaces per unit for a project of this size and location, which is, which correlates almost exactly to what Avesta's experience has been in the projects that were included in that evaluation. So based on that, and as we've kind of talked about with the planning board and with the council, you know, Avesta, through its experience, is very comfortable and confident that the parking that's proposed on the site will meet the requirement based on their experience. We did look, as we talked last time, at some other options to try to fit more parking on the project if, if that became necessary. One option that we looked at was providing additional parking across the front of the building for, you know, part of the objectives of this is to, is to preserve the historic appearance of that building when it's restored, and aesthetically, we didn't think that was a positive approach. It would net some additional parking spaces. Certainly add parking across the front of the building, but you would lose a few spaces accessing the, through where there's some existing spaces. The other approach that we can use, if the board is comfortable with it, is that, you know, the ordinance does allow parking spaces to reduce the width. Right now, the majority of the parking spaces are nine feet in width with the standard space in the town. The spaces that we've shown that are in the shoreline zone portion have been reduced eight feet to reduce the purges footprint. If we reduce additional spaces in the other three parking areas, we could net out another three spaces if the board felt that was, that was necessary. And then the other option really would be to reduce some of the landscaping in the, in that parking lot would also net out additional spaces. But again, those are options the board is certain to consider, but we're pretty confident that, you know, based on Avesta's experience, that what we're proposing would meet the expected demand of the project. I guess with that, I think those were the major topics that were our discussion. Again, I'm prepared, we can answer any of the questions that came up through the staff review, but I'd kind of hope to turn it over to you to find out what's important against those questions.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to the board a couple of things, I understand that the proposal right now is 55 spaces is left, without the reduction from 90 to 80, and what you just mentioned, possibly going into the state, is that correct?
Yeah, well, it's presented on the plans at your last review as 55 spaces.
The other comment, and board members should have received a copy of this, is that we do have a letter from Rachel Gurley from Gurley and Kixx Valley right next door that you will put into the minutes, question, and I don't know if you see a copy of this.
Yeah, that was presented to us at the last conference meeting.
I thought so, I just wanted to double check. Having said that, I will open it up to the board. Mike, you want to start? Sure. Did, can you, can you tell me again the confidence you have in ingress and degress of the site, especially heading out of, around Route 1? I saw, just, I saw the traffic analysis, it doesn't look like, I mean, many of the time spots, you're settled in zero, is that correct?
Yeah, the main, the traffic study really looks at the, the generation of turning movements in and out of the site in the peak morning or afternoon hours, and so the, the movement that was of concern from the traffic standpoint was the eight left-hand turns that we would project coming into the site in the afternoon rush hour, crossing across the southbound traffic. Those are the, those were the trips that trigger the warrant for a left-turn lane, and as we talked about last time, any development on this corridor that has as many as two left-hand turns across that line of traffic meets the warrant for a left-turn. So those were the two, those were the, those were the trips that triggered the potential for a left-turn lane warrant, and I think the number of trips out of the site in the morning that might turn left were, I believe, the usual trips in an hour.
Now, on, do they have a design of this left-turn lane already? A conceptual design? I mean, one does not exist now, right?
No, we prepared a draft that the staff could, you know, asked us to look at, and, you know, a, I shouldn't say a left-turn lane, it would probably be a center-turn lane, a shared center-turn lane similar to what's in room one in this section of room one from here up north. We did look at a concept of that to see if it was feasible, and, you know, it is feasible. It would likely require acquisition of wayway, not in front of our site, but further to the north as you transition from that center turn, depending how far that center turn lane would be desired to go. If it didn't go the full length of Route 1 to the next signal, it would need to be transitioned back to a, two lanes each way instead of a five-lane section. Some distance to the north that would require the acquisition of wayway on the east side of the project. We looked at a couple of different ways that that turn lane could be affected. You could widen to the, to the north of the west side, or you could widen to both sides. Widening to the east side of the road is somewhat problematic, there's a line of three-faced power poles that would be impacted, have to be relocated, and then there's some additional wetland impacts as you get up towards the marsh in that direction. So we did, we did prepare a draft during our conversation though with the staff, the peer review engineer, it became clear that that's a pretty significant policy decision that the town would have to undertake, that was of what the design for Route 1 ought to be through that section. During the design of the Dunston Corner improvements, we've been told that there was originally a concept that the divide island that's in, on this, in the road today extending up to the site was originally envisioned to go much further to the north, that was scaled back, I think for budgetary reasons. So, looking at improvements for that corridor, you know, it was the staff's opinion that that's sort of a town policy issue, that's sort of beyond the scope of what a project that generates eight turns that are concerned would happen, would be expected to take down on their own. But we have done a concept plan that shows how a center turn lane configuration could work on that corridor.
So, so you're not saying that this project is, has lost any real momentum because of this challenge, would you?
No, I don't think so. I think that, you know, we're pretty confident based on the, again, the population and the traffic generation that we've done, that controlling that left turn movement into the site, the way that we agree, what we worked through with the staff, will, will address the needs of the project.
And as far as parking, I think, I talked quite a bit about that last, last meeting, and pleased to see that you, you're up to 55. I wouldn't be opposed to it, but would gathering more. Did you consider any areas that you could show on a site plan that should, several months after the project is completed, if it proves that your analysis is a little bit optimistic that you could possibly add, add parking?
Yeah, I think the only real feasible place to add parking would be additional parking along at the, in the drop-off area, we did show that on the plan, I believe we showed one space there. We looked at some other options, but we don't want to get any closer to Route 1 with the parking spaces than what we have today, so we're kind of restricted in that direction. We're restricted coming to the, to the backside of the property because of the shoreline zone orientation of the purges area. And the only other option which we're not showing on the plan would be to park across the front of the building, and I think when we looked at that, you know, that might net five or six spaces once it's all said and done, but that would be a, a large amount of payment to put across the front of the building right next to Route 1.
But what I'm seeing on my plan right now is proposed parking to be built, am I not?
Yes. Yes, what's shown on the plan is proposed, and we have one additional space that could be reserved for a future space.
Is that shown that way?
Uh, it's shown, yeah, there's a, there's a space shown here.
Okay, I might be looking at the wrong page, right next to handicap?
Yep. It's a little hard to see because of the concrete, I guess, in that area.
Okay, that's it for now, Mr. Chair, thank you. Thank you. John?
All right. Want to do with parking, then, obviously, we have to just kind of do a recommendation of the council, if there's spots up there we can. That's correct, that's the relaxation, the flexibility with the number of parking spaces as part of the contract zone application, it's one of the, the specific zone allowance, correct.
So I'll do with that, and the right turn, holding the entrance exit, I'm happy with that. One more second. Thank you. One second.
Okay, Mike, I'm very excited about this proposal, it's wonderful. Moving forward to see it come to, come to us as a completed effort. I'm only concerned about the right-in, right-out in terms of, I know this will happen anyway, but I wouldn't say it, the construction and the design of that be done very carefully. We have a lot of them, not a lot, we have several at the major intersections in Scarborough, and quite frankly, they don't work. It does not keep people from coming in and exit only, and I can give you places where it doesn't work. I know it has to be done a certain way in order to allow in, fire trucks and police protection and all that, but I'm not sure exactly how that gets done, but there, there needs to be a lot of work done on how you keep people from, I also have to realize that where it is, not many people will be crazy enough to try to do it in a way that is not allowed, but we all know people do that, especially around Dunston. So that continues to concern me, I think it is the answer, right-in, right-out, absolutely, but in looking carefully at how that actually is designed.
We talked a link with the city staff on how that would be. They'll have to develop it on a check sheet.
You mean hire people, it's all on board as well, right?
And as far as I know, they have, we haven't gotten any additional comments.
And, if you, if you could be a little bit, where are the snow storage?
The snow storage would be back here, on the back of the site, here, and across the back here. Again, that, that's something Avesta deals with on, on many of their projects, most of their projects that are in urban areas have, don't have really snow rules, so that's a, kind of a basic part of their program.
Okay. Um, signage, there was, under architecture and signage, we're not having any signage, or we haven't seen it yet, or?
We don't have a site design, we have a location shown on the site plan, the actual design.
Right, signage is not really there, yes, yeah. I have, my, my biggest concern is the right turn in, right turn out, we will have to watch, I will make sure that we watch it very carefully. Other than that, I think you've done a wonderful job of answering our basic early on questions, and I'll have to.
Roger? Thank you. I agree with Sue, I think it's a great project, and I hope everything works out well for you. My biggest concern has been the parking and the, the traffic flow, and I would trust that you folks understand the whole concept of parking for this type of residential, you know, I would say that you have. Explain to me, I'm not quite sure about the right, right in and right out right now, what's going to happen right now, you know, to this thing. Oh, I mean, how, somebody's going north on Route 1, how are they going to get into the property?
If they're heading north on Route 1?
Yes, right now.
Right now, they would have to, well, they have to be coming south, and the most likely route to do that would be to take a left turn on Main Road, head north, and then come down Milton Road.
Okay, okay, and then if they, and they have to do the same thing when they leave? Basically do the same thing?
Yes, if you wanted to go north.
Okay. All right. I think that's, oh, let me just ask you, what's the latest with the, the porch, I'm kind of curious about that.
I don't know what the latest with the porch is.
We don't know yet.
I'm Kylie Blair, the development officer for Avesta for this project. A couple of months ago, we actually did receive our preliminary part one historic national parks service approval, so we kind of got through the first hurdle. Right now, we're, we're waiting for their full packet of what we can and can't do with the historic structures. They identified the front porch as a significant 20th century structure. The earliest we can get to the porch, based on this description, we'll get a little bit more definition if we're able to, but for now, that is at least an update.
So basically, right now, they're, they're suggesting keeping it?
They, they think it's important, it sounds like.
Okay, I'm just kind of curious. I think that's all we have. One more second. Nick?
Yeah, I think, I appreciate, I certainly appreciate what effort you've put in with the parking members and reassuring us that this, this isn't going to be an enormous parking disaster, I appreciate that. So I'm comfortable with what you've presented here. I do have the same concerns as my other board members here with the right-in, right-out, how it's utilized. I think, I think there's a longer-term solution that needs to be part of the town discussion for Route 1 altogether, it's not squarely on your shoulders. I think with what you're working with, it's, it's a good solution for what you're working with, it's probably the best that you could come up with, the staff, as you mentioned. So, in light of that, you know, I, I would have concerns about the butter's properties at this point, you know, if you, if I'm forced to, you know, why do I really want to turn left, what's to stop me from jumping into the neighbor's yard? what's to stop me from jumping into the neighbor's yard and popping a U-turn? You know, whether it's another business or something, whether or not you see overflow traffic trying to do what you're trying to prevent. And I think it's natural for people to take that shortcut rather than take the left or around. It's just a messy area traffic wise, so that's my major concern. It's been my concern. I don't think what surprises you hearing it from me that that's my major concern with this. So, but for what we've got to move to here, I think you guys have talked a good time. Thank you.
Okay, now I'm going to move a few things, probably some of which we've already stated, but before we send a recommendation on to the council, I want to make sure we have all our thoughts aligned from the thinking of the board. Picking up on what I forget, I did drive down there. Is there a connection between where the antique facility is and where South Gate is so somebody could go directly into that parking lot? Or is it all blocked off like giving them?
There's a fence now. There's a split rail fence along the property. It doesn't extend quite the full length to Route One. There's a split rail fence along that, along the property line.
Because as you were aware, even that was said, you know, the town would need to have people go through there.
Yeah, there's no vehicle connection through between the two corners.
The other thing jumping ahead is, I know you've got to go back to the council, but we as a board require any state or federal permits to be in hand prior to making any final decision on the application. Couple of comments from our new town engineer, not the irrelevant. One is the plans show a large block wall with guard rail and fence within the northeasterly corner of the parking lot. It does not appear to be much room between this wall and the pattering line in that corner of the parking lot. She's looking for some reassurance that this rail is constructable without the need for temporary construction easements from the neighbors. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. You talked about the storage areas, so that, she also recommends that the design should move the curb line and the traffic alley at the main entrance back to Benham, one foot to prevent storm loss. And she also recommends that inspection, maintenance and housekeeping plans should be edited to reference Thomas Scavo standards.
Yeah, there was one reference in there that had an incorrect date.
We talked about the front porch and that's up in the air right now. Talked about access, you've dealt with the fight about the rights, they look, they provide the call.
Yeah, we'll get back with them again to make sure they're okay with the new maintenance configuration. But everything else that's on the plan was based on our conversation with them back in June.
You realize it has to be a stormwater management plan after the fact too. Susan, any problem with that statement?
No, I would like to ask a quick question if you're ready to move the motion.
What was that, Susan?
I have to ask a quick question about product procedure, if I may.
What?
The letters that we received from folks that are on particular issues, do we address them at this level? Do, I'm not sure. How does somebody who has concerns about a particular item know that we've actually gotten this other than the minutes saying that we received it? Do we, how do we respond to their concerns? Is this the place to do it?
It's what I meant, a very specific response that the board wants staff to provide, or wants to provide, you can do that at the meeting. And they can get the minutes from the meeting or watch the tape or it can, otherwise sometimes the board acknowledges and reviews the letter and puts in the file.
I would like to do that if I might, with the letter that came in from Rachel Hurley, I believe it is, from Hurley Antiques Gallery. I would like to have the minutes of our meeting here go directly to her concerning this particular issue, because I think many of her concerns were addressed this evening. But I would like to just take a second to say, to respond to the fact that her husband is a designer named John Libby. Well, we're related because so am I. I am one of those people that came right back from John Libby. And I'm going to tell you, the worst thing that could happen to anybody related to the Libbys is to see the property come down. And that's what happened to the widow's walk. Nobody wanted to say that it came down. Huge historic building. But the thing about this property is that this is where to save this property. It has to meet certain standards in order to get the financing that the folks who are asking for this has to meet. It will be saved. It may not be completely 100% the way it was when it was originally designed, but this property will now become safe and saved. And I think it's a boon to town to have that. We're not going to be destroying anything, but we're saving something. And then the question about how does it help the town? It's a very good question, and I think that we need to take a long, long historic look at this. Scarborough has been trying for a very long time, a couple of decades actually, to do something about affordable housing in Scarborough. And that includes workforce housing. And it's been a struggle. And I personally am very proud to have been, to be part of not one but two efforts to take care of that, not to take care of, to address the issue. One would have to be Habitat for Humanity. Scarborough is taking an active role in working with Habitat for Humanity to create that. And I think we should be proud of this. And this is another one. This is the town working with an applicant to save a restored house. And I just think it's very, very exciting. So I hope that it says something to Rachel. I mean, I think that we're all on the same page. We don't want to say anything happened to this building. And I think that this is going to assure that we won't. And maybe the minutes from the meeting will help as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. That's the way I measured before we even turned it over to the board that we had this in our possession. To give recognition to, appreciate your comments and addressing it. I think that's about all I have. Certainly is this consensus.
I have a question for Dan.
Sure.
For God in Route One, just kind of curious and for the public's benefit, would the new bike be going down near the old Dunston School Restaurant? Is there a turn lane right there? I don't think there is, is there?
Well, the Dunston School Restaurant property, the new grocery store that's going in, that will be primarily served by the traffic signal at Main Road. Because there's, if you're asking about access to that, that's principally served by that newly relocated Main Road. And there's also a right in, right out to that property as well. Because on that section of Route One, there's a center traffic median where there isn't the intersections.
Okay. All right, so there's been basically no discussion on part of the town to extend a wider road up a bit because of Heston's experiences?
There has not. And to Mr. Radley's point earlier, that's a very significant traffic transportation improvement. It's a multi, maybe not a million dollar project, but it could approach that depending on the limits of work. So as discussed this evening, this seems like a pretty reasonable short, medium term solution for access to the property. And the town can look at whether in the future it makes sense to plan that direction. I know that there's clear consensus of whether Center Left Turn Lane is appropriate there given the size of the property, sort of development potential in that area. It may be, it may not be. I mean, that's part of the kind of indecision at this point. It's not clear that that isn't the long range plans. So we wouldn't necessarily want this applicant to start pursuing that without some pretty thorough study as to whether that makes sense for that stretch of road.
One more second?
Yes.
You won't be coming back anyway, but I think the consensus of the board is that we would say to go ahead and recommend to the council that they give an approval on contracts or. Do you need anything else from us?
The really, it's was really just to address some of the comments so that when we come back after the council action, we'll take less than that potentially.
Thank you. Agenda item number five, Verizon Wireless requests a site plan review for transmission power at 239 Broad 200, assess its map at 24 lot 6. Would you like to?
Sure.
Ease this into.
I'll ease you in. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This Verizon Wireless tower application. Go ahead, Dan.
Transmission tonight, Dan.
That's already used.
Oh, it is? I'll bring it back.
This project was last before you. It's back in late June. The transmission tower review process is updated, still due to the board and staff and applicants. So we continue to kind of work through how this process should go. I think in late June, with the applicant, you really focused on how the priority of location to walk through the first section of the requirements for a new application and first analyze whether existing towers could be used in town, industrial zones before turning your attention to the overlay area, which is the more rural areas where new towers are allowed. And it's my understanding you kind of walked through that process and at that meeting decided that at least this area of town could be reserved for a tower. And so now they're back before you to kind of dig into the more detailed aspects of siting, buffering, tower height, screening, things of that nature, camouflaging potentially. So we have staff comments prepared for your consideration that try to zero in on those. And the ordinance provisions really try to balance a lot of things. So one of the things that encouraged the board to consider this evening with the applicant is, you know, what is the optimal height for this particular application, but also to enable co-location in the future should you approve this particular location? Because one of the overarching goals is to minimize the overall number of towers. So making sure that the location height of a tower works for not just Verizon, but also others in the future so that it can be utilized more and more fully. So that's commented on in the staff comments in terms of the height and whether a pole or a tower can be extended to accommodate additional carries, et cetera. There also has been some comments or questions around the color, potential camouflaging of the tower. And to Mr. Major's point earlier, we received two or three emails correspondence from property owners in the neighboring subdivision along part of the drive with concerns about potential visibility of a tower. So those have been provided to the board for your consideration. Also, it could kind of play a role in how the board looks at sort of camouflaging or the treatment of the tower and maybe buffering. So that's another turn of the area to talk about this evening in terms of how the tower could be buffered and ensuring some of the existing trees remain because there's an active gravel pit that could change landscape in the future, unless that was stipulated. And then elsewhere in the staff comments, there's fire department comments in terms of the access drive and its width and design. And I know the fire department's going to talk further with the applicant on the details of that. And so staff's ready to kind of finalize those considerations. Typically 20 feet is desired, but if that's not possible in all locations, I'm sure the fire department and our town engineer can kind of work with the applicant on figuring out the best possible design on that. And other than the staff comments, there's also a man off of Woodard Current. And they're reviewing the engineering details of this, but also they have staff that have a good understanding of cell service, radio frequency analysis, et cetera. So they have some comments in here as well. And are essentially satisfied in terms of a lot of the technical aspects, but for maybe some of the engineering details, there's some questions about culvert crossing and some stormwater questions. So it's kind of where staff is at this point in providing introductions.
Thank you. That's a pretty good introduction. Turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Scott Anderson, I'm here tonight with Chip Forgett on behalf of Verizon Wireless. What I'll do is kind of, because this is new for the town and for the board, talk briefly about some of our goals and objectives and how we think they align with the ordinance. We've reviewed the comments that the town has received from some of the butters. And to the folks here, folks who will be watching, we'll try to kind of give a summary of our thoughts on how the ordinance works to address some of those concerns. As I'm going, if I say anything that causes you to pause or you're confused, please feel free to stop me while we're going here, Dan New as well, to make sure as I'm going, things make sense and are consistent and give you a review of all the documents we've given you, which are somewhat significant. And primarily what we're hoping to do is get some of your initial thoughts on some of these more detailed performance standards in your ordinance, see what any additional information you might need so that we have some direction from the board as to how you're feeling about the project and what the next steps might be. Big picture, we have two primary goals with this site, as we do with any site that Verizon Wireless develops. The first goal is that we are trying to improve cellphone coverage in town. We provided the radio frequency report with our original application that identifies for the board and for everyone else, areas where we think we have inadequate coverage and how the proposed project kind of ties in with some of the other adjacent sites. And we talked a little bit about this at our last meeting. Basically, what we're trying to do is put a tower in a location at a particular height that will allow the coverage from this tower to kind of bump up against the coverage of the existing ones without coming up short or without running over and having to run forward. So we asked the engineers to do the assessment that they do based on what the coverage is from the existing sites and to identify a location and a tower height that fits this gap the best. And we appreciate, we saw some of the comments. When we identify a coverage gap, it does not mean that a phone will never work, that that's some sort of dead zone. What it means is for the type of news that people are making on their cellphones, which is both voice and data, and at varying levels of intensity of use. So when everybody's got, you know, the patriots are, you know, coming down to the last two minutes and everyone's grabbing their phone out and texting everyone, that affects the signal. And so at some point in time, you may get a signal for voice, at other times you won't. Or data can be more challenging than voice. So the way we design the network is the engineers take a look at what is working now and what's not working, and then we build the network to meet that. Gone are the days of that gentleman in the ads where he walks every five feet and says, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? So based on what we've done, we've identified a need here. So that first goal of improving coverage is the purpose of the site. Your consulting engineers at Woodard Current, as Dan mentioned, include some RF folks on their staff. And they took a look at our proposed project and the coverage gap. And our interpretation of their report was they agreed with us that there is inadequate coverage in this area and that at least as an engineering issue, that our project fits that coverage gap. We talked a little bit at the last meeting about how Verizon Wireless is trying to improve cellphone service in town in a number of different ways. This is one of the projects. We recently are working on a project in a church steeple where no one will see it. It's a stealth site. We're having discussions with the town about potentially putting small antennas on light poles in front of Hanford and Bellas to provide some coverage in those areas. There's another tower application that is before you now. We've been communicating with those folks about possible co-location on that tower. So the solution for the town of Scarborough, from our perspective, will be a mixture of things in steeple and little things on light poles that no one will see. And then there will be some new towers as well to provide the kind of coverage that we're looking for in the entire town. So this is one part of a, kind of a bigger project to improve cellphone tower, cellphone coverage in town. So if goal number one is to improve coverage, goal number two is to do it with the smallest impact on the fewest number of people as possible. Cellphone antennas need to be seen for them to work. They can't be completely hidden. When we do a church site, we remove the wooden panels of the church steeple and we replace them with a material that looks like wood and it's white and matches up. But it's actually a material that allows the signal to go through. So trees and buildings. So trees and buildings and other topical distractions affect how the cellphone system works, and essentially the rule is you need to see it in order for it to work. But what we try to do is, um, place the site, uh, place a tower in a particular site at a height, um, that minimizes these impacts to the greatest, greatest extent we can. And so when I look at those two goals for us, I think those are the two goals that the town's new wireless ordinance has been drafted to, to, um, provide for. So there was a determination that, um, uh, additional cellphone coverage was a good thing for the town, but there are a series of standards that we need to meet, working with the planning board, um, that addresses the second hope, which is to minimize the impacts as, as much as possible. And, um, there's two big categories of, of standards that the town has enacted that we need to meet in order to build a new tower. Uh, Dan had mentioned the priority of location discussion that we had at the last planning board meeting, uh, for folks that, that are paying attention and maybe haven't read through the entire ordinance, there's kind of two hoops we have to jump through before we can propose a new tower. The first is we have to show that there are no existing structures anywhere where we can add, um, our antennas. We looked in the area, concluded that there were no, um, existing structures that we could locate on, and Woodard Current agreed with us that that was the case. So that was the first hurdle. The second hurdle is we have to show that we can't meet this coverage, uh, gap by going to the tower in, in lots of zone industrial. So we went through that process and did that evaluation, concluded that we couldn't do it with a tower in the industrial zone, and again, Woodard Current agreed with us that that was the case. So we had an initial, kind of over that first hurdle, which was, is it, um, feasible to build a new tower? And so we got through that discussion with the planning board at the last meeting. And now where we go is a second big chunk of standards, meeting the ordinance, that deals specifically with what's going on right where we propose to put the tower. And there are a number of standards that regulate how high it is, uh, how big the lot has to be that it's on, how far is it from different property boundaries, um, buffering around the site and what it looks like, uh, whether there's lighting or advertising, so a number of other kind of small and more detailed requirements, um, that are there again to minimize the impact drivers, to allow companies to provide better coverage, but doing it, uh, a way that kind of minimizes impacts to the folks in, in the neighborhood itself. One of the new bits of information that we provided to the board, and I'm sorry, we were hoping to do a fancy PowerPoint, uh, but with a change of venue, um, I brought some hard, hard copies that we can hand out. We had provided to the planning board photo simulations of, of, with two different variables. One, we, uh, and the way this works, and some of you may have seen the balloons, we, we flew a balloon. The town asked us to not only fly the balloon at one hundred and twenty feet, which is our proposed height, that's the yellow balloon, uh, for any of you that have seen it, but also to fly a red balloon at a hundred and fifty feet, which would be the maximum height that the board could, uh, allow a tower in order to approach co-location on a tower. So we flew the balloon at both, at both heights, so that folks could get a sense of how high a one fifty tower would be. And you can see in the simulations, you know, the difference between the two. The other variable, we asked Ben Karen, who's our photo simulation guy, to, uh, do a run of simulations, showing it as a monopole tower, which is the flat gray, um, towers that you're used to seeing, but also do it, uh, as what we call a monopole, which is a tower that is made to look like a tree. In particular, at a height of between ninety and a hundred and twenty feet, the monopole can often be a very effective way to provide essentially on-tower buffering of the project. If you're doing a hundred and ninety-foot tower, given the relative tree canopy, those usually look horrible because they stick way up above and it's just bigger and darker. But one of the things that I think you can see in the photo simulations is that at this level, given the surrounding vegetation, um, it, it actually helps blend the tower in, uh, to the existing vegetation in a way that, that dramatically minimizes the visual impact. But I'm, I'm just going to put a couple up here for folks that are interested and want to just grab, want to take a look at. This is the pine tree list stack, and that's the, the monopole. If this is worth talking about, feel free to go ahead and look through those. So, so that's our, our proposal, um, is the hundred and twenty-foot, um, tower. We provided the simulations to give the board, um, a sense of what these would look like either as a, a tower or as a tree. Picking up on Dan's comments, I guess just addresses some of the comments. We're continuing to work with the, the fire chief. Um, what we're trying to do is make sure there's a width of the road that, um, the fire department is comfortable with for access without having to cut more and do more cut and fill, um, with the topography in order to provide that access. So we're continuing to, to talk to the, the fire chief about those issues and continuing the discussion. The, there have been, um, what I probably should do is just talk a little bit about tower height and co-location, and then as opposed to walking through the simulations and the tree, while I had a chance to look at it, maybe it would be better just to get the questions of the folks out about them. What we've done about tower height is to try to propose the height that is the lowest that's necessary for us to fill this coverage gap. And, um, there's actually some language in the ordinance that allows the planning board, one thirty is the, deemed the kind of average height, but the planning board can drop us down to one twenty or one ten or even lower, um, if the board were to conclude that a lower tower would work. So we've provided the coverage at a hundred and twenty feet tower height, and we've also provided some plots if the tower would drop to one ten or a hundred or ninety feet. We've concluded that doesn't work for our project to fill the coverage gap, and Woodard Current looked at that as well, and I think agreed with us, at least to the extent that they were listening to co-location issues. So we think we've done what we're required to do, which was, which is propose the lowest tower that works for us, so that nothing gets built that isn't necessary. And you can see, you know, you get a sense between one twenty and one fifty, what the visual impacts will be and how it will change, as people go as high as one fifty, and that's information for you to consider. What you're trying to do is balance between having us build the smallest tower possible while still providing for co-location. Our thought is that usually the best thing to do is, in the absence of another pending application, um, we think it makes sense for us to build the one twenty, but to make sure that the foundation is designed so we can hold the tower as high as one fifty with, you know, two or three other carriers located on the tower. The process that the carriers use is when Chip or Chip's counterpart at AT&amp;T gets a report from the engineer saying, "Find me someplace to hang my antennas in this area," he first goes and looks for existing towers, because that is the quickest and cheapest way to get your antennas up in the air. So in the event AT&amp;T comes into this area, they will do the same thing, you know, identify Chip's tower, give him a call, say, you know, what's the voting, what do you have on there? Is there space? They'll run their plots at different elevations to see if they can make use of the site. And this board would require that applicant as part of the priority of locations to, on that first step, to show why there couldn't be a tweak to this tower that would allow them to use our tower as opposed to building a new tower. And the site is available, uh, the foundation will be designed for a higher tower, and it can be modified to be taller. It may be that a lower level would work for a different carrier, depending on where their other sites are, so it might not need to go up, but it is certainly expandable vertically to get to a hundred and fifty feet if the board decided with a subsequent application, that would be helpful. But our, our thought is it makes sense for the visual impact, because as long as you get one twenty for now. My interest is your thoughts on that. I think, just so you don't have to listen to me talking the whole time, I'd probably turn it over to the board for any questions that we have, if you'd like us to walk through any of the simulations or talk about them in, in specific detail. We are ready to do so.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to the board, two things, uh, Dan mentioned, but I want to be more specifically, uh, specific. We have, uh, three letters, uh, from individuals within the area. One, uh, is from a Nicole Lane, um, let me see, a, a living Cottabook, which is the address of this one. Another is from Mark Eric Emmer at eleven Cottabook Drive. And the third is from Enron Boder, who lives at eight Cottabook Drive.
Six.
So for the, I think, uh... Six, thank you. Six, thank you. Uh, Cottabook Road, so I want, uh, and I write these, and I'll have a comment when it comes around to be, uh, addressing some of the concerns of these individuals. In addition to that, this is an agenda item that is open for public discussion. And as in the past, uh, I ask that if you are going to speak, first of all, you give us your name and address, and you keep your comments down to approximately five minutes. And any subsequent speakers, I would hope, would not repeat what they just heard. Certainly, I want everybody to have an opportunity to express themselves, but, uh, and for the sake of time, uh, not hear the same thing over and over again. One other column I want to make before we get into a public discussion. This board does not have the jurisdiction to give an opinion on any health aspects of a, um, tower. So we cannot address that issue. The second issue I want to address before, uh, turning it over to the public is that one of the accusations is that there hasn't been enough notification. First of all, before the standards even came to the board, it was widely discussed, uh, as to what those standards would be. There were plenty of opportunities for public input in creating the standards that we have to go by. So it just was not done behind closed doors in any sort of secret way. I, I think there has been more than enough, uh, public notice of what the potential is as far as building, uh, cell towers in, in the town of Scarborough. Having said that, I will now open it up to the public, for anybody who cares to address the board. Anybody?
I'd like to say something.
Can you get, come up to the microphone, please?
My name is Anson Boder, and I wrote a letter. Um, I live at six Carterbrook Drive. First of all, I absolutely appreciate the need for cellphone towers. I mean, it makes perfect sense to me. I would encourage you very strongly to keep it at a hundred and twenty feet. I saw the balloons, just the, the lower of the balloons, as far as I was concerned, was, was acceptable, but, but please, please, please try to disguise it as a pine tree, because it's a beautiful, beautiful line of trees, and if we have a tower sticking out visually, it's, it's, it's really ugly. So, I mean, I'm not opposed to cell towers. It would be wonderful if it wasn't in my backyard, but, but, I mean, I mean, I understand, I understand where we are. I might have even, did you drive down our street with a Prius by some chance? No? Anyway, but if, but in any, but in any event, make it look like, make, try to make it look like a pine tree. Try to keep it at a hundred and twenty feet, and then once it's at a hundred and twenty feet, try to keep it at a hundred and twenty feet. Don't come back two years from now or eighteen months from now and say, "Sorry, guys, we're at a hundred and fifty feet." Okay? Because really, I mean, from this picture, it doesn't look bad, but I mean, I can imagine the worst, and it would be just nice if we could preserve the tree line, preserve the rural character, and, um, that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you. For both, uh, your letter to us and your comments, and I'm going to jump ahead and probably be out of order, but I'm going to say, as long as I serve this board, it won't go any further than a hundred and twenty feet. I can assure you of that.
Thank you. I, I really, I really appreciate that.
Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Mark Eric Emmer, one of the contributors of the letters that are set forth in front of you, address of eleven Carterbrook Drive in Scarborough. And I do oppose the construction of the cellphone tower, uh, that has been proposed before you. We are new residents of Carterbrook Drive, did our homework and looked at different neighborhoods around. Carterbrook Drive did not have any proposals for cellphone tower, and what sold us on the place was the looks, the character, the aesthetics of the neighborhood and the possibility of future growth. Since we've built our house, we've had one other one next to us constructed and another one underway. These are good things for more growth in the town of Scarborough. Cellphone tower definitely will hinder anybody's desire to be moving within the neighborhood and building. One of my reasons of why I oppose the construction and approval of the cellphone tower. In addition, it's going to contribute to the damage of our property value in our neighborhood and surrounding property values as well. I'd also mention the damage of the character and aesthetics of the neighborhood. Open area, nice tree line, beautiful skies. A one hundred and twenty-foot tower will stick out like a sore thumb, a hundred and fifty-foot, even worse. Personally, I do have Verizon as a coverage. I do not have any problems with the coverage in the area. Verizon has great coverage in the area. And last but not least, I feel that other locations nearby do exist and should be considered. That's what I have to say.
Thank you again for the letter appearing before us tonight. The, the only other comment I would like to make, and this is not pro or con, or anybody can read into it, is that the only function of this board is to follow the standards. Now, this is brand new, so we're, we're learning as we go along, to be honest with you. But we, if we're handed a, a standards, and it is our function to make sure that the applicant is following those standards or not, and, uh, that may be up for discussion. But it's not our prerogative to change them per se. Uh, I'm the first to say that, uh, there are some gray areas, and I keep going over the, what's been given to us. So, uh, I can understand that, uh, there is a need for open discussion about these new projects. And I'm saying, having, anybody else? I'm sorry. Okay? I'm going to close the public discussion and open it up to Boyd. Nick Boyd, start thinking.
I am going to ask you to defer while I collect my thoughts for this.
Roger.
Thank you.
I have a few questions, um, kind of technical. Is there a difference between the monopole and the monopole in terms of their performance standards?
You mean with regard, with regard to structure, there's no difference?
Uh, I'm talking about standard, the performance standard, you know, the signal, the signal to everything.
No, not at all. So it doesn't, the, the materials that the pine needles are made of do not interfere with the propagation of the signal, so the tower will work exactly the same at a hundred and twenty feet, whether as a pole or disguised as a pine tree.
So I'm not sure I've seen any photograph, any pictures of, of what that tower actually looks like. I know, I know what the tree looks like, but do you have this?
Oh, you mean of the, of the...
Do you have a section where it's, there's no, it's a something, and that's with it?
No, although the, the picture of the regular pole is similar, if not identical, to the core structure of what constitutes the, the monopole. The, the only difference is the addition of the branches, and then there'll be a coloration of the trunk of the tree, um, to, so that it doesn't kind of shine through the branches. But I, you're right, we haven't given you a kind of a, a spec of the, of the underlying pole itself, um, but that's information that we could, we could...
I just wanted to make sure that it was a, a nice-looking pine tree, and then there's a gap where you have your signal, you know?
Yeah, no. No, the, the, the branches will go up and around the antennas at the top, and normally, actually, uh, you'll get a couple that go kind of vertically off... you'll get a couple that go kind of vertically off the top above the antennas so that it looks as much as possible as a, as a real tree.
Okay, so for, for, for as his point of view, there's absolutely no difference in the performance of the two types of towers?
That's correct. We'll have to add.
Okay.
To, to, to add to Scott's description of the monopine, the antennas would also be painted green, so the pole itself is painted brown. The antenna faces painted green. And there are branches that surround the antennas. So the simulations that you have there, rest assured, that's, that's about as, about as good as it's going to look.
Again, just for, a question we got, and not, not that I'm advocating going higher than 120, but if you were, if it were to go higher than 120, do you add that from the bottom, or do you add it to, to the top to go higher?
To be honest, I've never actually worked on a project where we built a monopine that was extendable.
Okay.
Okay. The case is true for a mono pole, just the galvanized steel pole can certainly be designed to be extendable. And chances are, if you were to recommend a 150-foot mono pole, we would build our 120, the foundation would be designed for 120. We'd actually have a 150-foot order, a 150-foot mono pole, and leave the top 30-foot section off.
Oh, okay. Okay, so the addition would go on top?
That's right.
Okay.
I don't know if you spoke or I misheard. Did you say that the foundation would be 120 along?
The foundation in the pole, we would design, we would design and purchase a 150-foot mono pole. The foundation would be designed for that 150-foot mono pole. We would not put on the 30-foot extension.
Just a, okay, now, just a couple of other questions. Mind if I, say, it's only at 120, and it's down from the future, some other carrier wants to, and they, they do their studies, and this is a location they want to have their, their poles, okay, their towers. Can there, can there be another tower? Can there be another tower put right near?
Have a chase into it?
Yeah. I, I saw one this week down.
I mean, ultimately, I mean, as an engineer, consideration, there needs to be some distance, but I think that would largely be a planning board determination. I mean, what would happen is, you know, AT&amp;T comes in, and they think that this works. And you would say to them, "Okay, what height do you need?" And if they needed to go higher, you would say, "Do a couple of things. Show us the photo simulations of the height, you know, and extending the town, what that would look like." But you would also say, "All right, what are your other alternatives?" It might be that AT&amp;T going a half a mile away with a 90-foot tower in a place that was kind of, wasn't visible from any location, or the board would decide that that would be preferable to extending the height of this tower, that would be a consideration, and you would want to explore it. I think the way your ordinance is written, it's a question of the board getting as much information as possible about all the different options that a carrier would have, so that you can look at what the town would prefer. And it, it might be that extending it by 10 feet, you would decide that was the best route. You might also decide that building a new tower someplace would be better because you couldn't see both of them, and it would prevent this tower from being a nightmare. I suppose you could agree to, to put two next to each other, but I haven't seen a double tower site since the first generation of cell phone towers on rural mounds in the middle of nowhere.
Actually, if you go down the main turnpike, maybe I've gone around the yard for.
That's right.
There's two.
Those were done in the late 90s. It's been a long time since all that's actually happened. Tower farms.
Okay.
Yeah. I think boards are now realizing, newspapers are realizing that they prefer one structure in front of to suit four or five carriers as opposed to a tower farm where you've got maybe two or three within a half-mile radius. In fact, in fact, yeah, in fact, there's a lot of, I've read many ordinances where they actually tower separation closets where no, two towers can be closer than a mile or two miles from one other.
Okay, so, the last, last question, and it pertains to one of the residents' questions about the location. On your, on your map here, was there any consideration to placing it anyplace else? Or is it just not feasible to do that on this site?
Well, there's, there's kind of two primary considerations. One is the tower height is tied to topography.
Yeah.
So if you go up and down a hill, the tower needs to be bigger if you go down a hill. So one of the things that we're looking at is the height of the tower, trying to keep it below 130. The other side of consideration is to, you know, you're working with a landlord who wants you to locate in a way that works for what they're using the land for. But also, when we do it, we talk to the landlord about, "Look, we don't want to put it in the middle of the field, right? There's a field right next door. That might work for us from an RF standpoint, but we're trying to put it on the site in a way that works for the coverage, works for the landlord, for the use of the property, but also puts it in a way, as Chip is looking at the site, that he knows there'll be some buffering, and that it will kind of fit as best we can into the surroundings and minimize the visual impact from multiple different angles." So you have a bunch of factors that go in, and then that was the, what led to the collection of this particular point on there.
So basically, you're, you don't feel you could move that around based on what the landlord wants, plus the landlord or name are, the top, top geography of the, of the site? You're pretty much?
You might be able to. I mean, it might be if the department doesn't change. I think when you look at 50, 60, 70-foot shifts of a tower, it has a very limited impact on the visual impact from where you're going. I mean, even if you were to move it 50 feet closer to the Carter Brook Drive subdivision, provided you have some vegetation at the base of the tower, even though it looks like a pine tree, it's not going to look that much different. So, you know, certainly, moving it 1,000 feet will change where it goes, but that likely starts to move it outside of that search ring that we had talked about the last time, which is where it needs to go. So there's a number of factors, and we've tried to pick one that's kind of a balance. You know, I came up at the last planning board meeting about the setback. And I apologize that the one thing that board members had asked for is the specific setback to this closest property line, which we missed. 255 feet, we'll have the engineers add that specific setback to the plan. But there's a provision that allows you to move this from 100% to 300%. Moving it to 100%, moving it a little farther away from Carter Brook Drive but closer to the others, and if they require the height of the tower to change. Moving it 300% on one level would seem like a good thing to one set of boundary lines, but then it moves it closer to another. So we've tried to kind of cite it in a way that meets all the standards, but do it, you know, with some vegetation and ways to try to minimize the impacts all around.
Awesome.
Before I make a one, I want to get something clear. Keeping it at 120 feet, would that be enough height to have another entity at 120 feet? It's, I, you say something might want to go 130 and 150 if you took on another.
Another carrier.
Another carrier.
Yeah, but what we know is that you couldn't put someone else at 120. The antennas can't overlap on that elevation, or there's too much signal interference. Normally, there's a nine or 10-foot separation. So, I mean, the first thing that the planning board would ask AT&amp;T or T-Mobile would be, "Why can't you go at 117, which would be 10 feet below our, or 107, sorry, 107, which is 10 feet below our antenna seven line, and show us why that doesn't fit your coverage objectives?" If it does, then that would be the resolution by the board. The tower would remain the same height, they would add their antennas 10 feet below ours, they're going to be hidden by the branches, and they drop their shelter inside the fenced area. It would only be if, if another carrier couldn't meet the coverage objectives at 107 that the board would then entertain, I would think, moving the tower up. And that would be subject to the same kind of review by water and power, and feedback from them as to whether they would agree.
I know we're jumping into the future and driving.
Yes.
And I know it doesn't pertain to exclusively, but hearing what we have just discussed, if I'm still, still sitting on the board and I didn't get old age home, I would not hope even for co-location going above the 120 feet. So any future co-habits would have to convince me that they could do what they wanted to do, stay at 120 feet.
Yeah, and that's, I think that's why the town set up the ordinance this way. That, you know, you have, you have flexibility at all these different stages in the process. You can require someone to go on an existing structure, you can take a look at co-location, but, but based on the actual impacts of changing a site to allow co-location, you might actually elect another option to provide coverage. And I think the board has all those different options. The thing that we don't know is what the other carriers could considerably need and when they might need. There's a lot of cooperation when a tower is up, and the carriers talk to each other, and they do their engineering, try to figure out what can be used. But we don't have a lot of information about what AT&amp;T's plans are, what their next sites look like. Could it be six months? Could it be 10 years before someone else came to you? Which is why our suggestion is you do it at 120, which is what we need. You do the best we can to camouflage it, and at that height, the camouflage works very well. And then you kind of leave for a later day the option of applying any number of different changes or new projects in order to meet a subsequent applicant's proposal.
That, Susan?
You need a drink? Good time. I'm overwhelmed. Basically, I think that doing this at 120 makes a lot of sense, if that's what the applicant needs. As long as, not having the correct terminology, the foundation is large enough, strong enough, hefty enough to carry whatever might come up to 150, even though we may not go there. So if that's done by you, the applicant, and you want 120 feet, I don't have a problem with that. I think 120 feet is a good, is a good height. However, 120 feet times two, three towers versus one at 130 or 150 is something that would require some very serious discussion, and that's not our problem. That's what's really cool. It's not our problem. I think it's our problem from the standpoint of knowing that we have an ordinance that's going to take care of it all. Okay? But right now, we're talking about 120 feet. I went out and I looked for balloons. Couldn't see a balloon. But then again, I don't look, you know, X number of feet away either. The only thing worse than 120-foot tower would be a 120-foot tower that pretends it's a pine tree. Have you seen them?
The bigger ones that pretend to be pine trees?
Yes. You, you stop your car, you pull off the road, and you just die laughing. You come for me, and you know, that's not a tree. It's not a tree. At 120 feet, it doesn't have to be a tree. 150 feet or whatever, 130, 150 feet, that might have to be taken into consideration. But then again, maybe the quote-unquote "technology" or "science" or whatever, that would be better than it is now. I think that ordinances that we have help us make the decision in the moment, but gives us an opportunity to see what happens in the future. And we can't predict that. Things are happening so fast in your industry, I can't possibly keep up. I don't know how you can keep up. So I'm personally happy with 120 feet, as long as it's designed to take whatever our ordinances allow. And then next time something comes in, we're just going to have to deal with it. So as far as I'm concerned right now with this application, I don't have any problems with it. I do think that people who are living nearby have to understand that visibility is not guaranteed. These are trees and shrubs and things that grow and die, and things come, you know, weather changes and whatever. There's always going to be a tower. But as somebody who doesn't really care that she doesn't get cell phone reception, you know, I have a hard time getting on board with this, but I do understand that it's necessary. And I do know that service requires it. And I think our ordinance is real well done, and I'll stand by it, and we've done a good job measuring up to them. Thank you very much.
Nick, we read it?
I think so. They got collected. Thank you for addressing the property line comment. I, I definitely was interested in how close regarding the property lines. For what it's worth, and this is my own personal opinion, I.
I would, I can have that water, it just needs to be pictured that shine down, not out.
And of course, the point for the amendment. And the other comment I would have, which was in staff notes is preservation of the vegetation to cover as time passes, so that future activity doesn't cause adverse impacts on the public. Anything else?
Go ahead. When I was, when I was reading over the staff comments, and this is just a minor thing, but I just found it kind of interesting. Talking about the chain link fence that's going to go down the location. And it's, it's supposed to be painted a dark color or a stark final. I think. Now, would an animal be able to see that? Or if you just left it a regular chain link fence? I mean, it's just a minor thing, but I just.
I, we'd be, we'd be happy to do it either way, I don't know.
Is there any reason for that dance?
That's a, that's a requirement under the site kind ordinance for all, it applies to all commercial development. So typically, you know, fencing is in more visible locations.
Right.
Such as our business areas. So that's, that's really just taken out of that context. Yeah. So if there's, under the site kind ordinance, the board has the ability to grant waivers. So if that's a big issue for the applicant and the board's comfortable with not having to do that, then we can obtain that.
I think it's more of an issue for a wandering animal.
We'll, we'll do it either way. Whatever.
The, the other question I had, Ron, is in the future, I'm just kind of curious about foreseeable. In the future, when there's a, another carrier wants to co-locate, do they have to come back to us? Or do they just feel that we're going to want a tower?
Does an existing tower?
Yeah.
Like, for instance, like in this case here, does Verizon have to come to us again to co-locate on here?
They would come to you and present that they're locating our existing tower, and they'd go through only the first step.
The prior location. So it would be amendment of the site.
There'd be an amendment to this.
Correct.
Add a different antenna to the tower.
And you'd probably have to do some sort of safety strait of also. That could help with the strait of it.
We would likely have to come back to the board because you would be looking at all of this information, the RF analysis, you know, where they need coverage, and if this tower needs, then it does.
Basically, what he basically wants to be?
Probably, I would, I would.
That's what I'm saying, you don't need just a process of four meetings, three meetings, stuff. Okay.
No, the tower would be there. So there would be an analysis of looking at.
Just the amendment.
What else do you need to give us? Because I'm going to make a recommendation that at the next meeting, it'd be consent plan put together by staff in conjunction with you, working on final details.
We're happy to do that.
Okay. I do have one thing, and I was remiss in the last two. One of the, both, in both of them, is a 12-foot wide roadway where the fire department really wants 20 feet. How do we get around that?
We change it to 20 feet.
You did change it?
Yeah.
Okay, great, that's great.
I, I, I didn't probably make that clear enough, but yeah. The staff before I said we changed it.
Okay, and my last comment is, during the construction phase, how is the club going to function?
How is the what going to?
Club going to function?
I don't think that should be a real problem. I mean, Louis can talk to that more than I can, but it's really, I mean, it's like a 30-day construction period, and maybe 45 at most, and they'll be able to bring in the materials and do a staging area back there. I don't think there's going to be real interruption, but I don't get my hands dirty, that's the thing. So I'm sort of guessing this as well, but.
Louis, my talent. Where the site is located is nowhere near where the members are shooting. So they're calling, they're just pushing out about that.
Yes, exactly. Verizon is.
You know, I'm a golfer, and all I can think of is when I go on the range and they have that person picking up the ball in the range and so forth. Okay, thank you. Well, I think we can then, you know, finish this up with the idea that at the next meeting, you can work with staff and they can set that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Next, agenda number seven. Tina and Eric Richardson request a preliminary subdivision review for a four-lot residential subdivision titled Fortune Estates, assesses map R10 lot nine. And I have that right. Yes. John has to, Mr. Quine has to lose himself because of an affiliation, so...
Close string with Frank.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. The board's seen this plan in the past as a sketch plan. They've also conducted a site visit to look at the property where the four-lot subdivision and roadway is proposed. I think this one, in terms of staff comments, most of the comments kind of revolve around the design of the roadway and its interconnection and intersection with Mitchell Hill Road, where this is a very steep section of Mitchell Hill Road. The site is also a steeper site than many subdivisions we've seen in the past. So for that reason, Public Works and the town engineer look pretty closely at the design. And they're reluctant to want it to be a public road. The applicants are viewed to proposing it as a private road. In large part, that feeling is based on the Mitchell Hill Road and how it interacts with this proposed roadway. There's a lot of concern about winter operations and access to the road and et cetera for Public Works equipment, also to some degree, school buses and other public services for the roadway. So the staff at least is glad to hear that the applicant's open to a private road proposal versus public for many of those reasons. Other than that, there's also some continued kind of concern with how the private, probably private road intersects with Mitchell Hill Road and the town engineer and the consulting engineer, traffic engineer. I'd like a bit more information in terms of grading analysis for that intersection, having more detailed spot grades and a better understanding of how that's going to tie in. Again, for many of the same reasons, but also for ingress and egress just for the residents of the proposed neighborhood as well as those traveling along Mitchell Hill Road in this section. This is sort of along the same lines, just having a bit more information on how drainage would be handled and more information on those contours for the road construction and home construction on various sites. Again, just given the profile fee of the area and fitting a four-lot subdivision road into the hillside there. I think other than that, that's really the thrust of the concerns with this one. There's also interest in, there's a fair amount of open space planned for the project. And the town, this is also in close proximity to Nutsuch River, which is the town's priority stream and river corridor where we've worked hard for a number of years to see conservation land connected and reserved. So if the applicants are open to it, the town's likely to be interested in having the open space be conservation and maybe can provide some public access or just be part of the corridor along the Nutsuch River. And I think those are kind of the highlights, Mr. Chair. As I mentioned, the town engineers look closely at it. Has the staff and the board that the applicant has, again, around grading and road design and stormwater. And would incur a similar questions and comments of the applicant on those topics as well as oral plumb or peer review on traffic.
Thank you.
I'll give it to the applicant. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jason Beck. I just, I'm Eric, and Tina Richardson of this project. I think the last time that we met, we were at that site walk, and there's been a pretty good wading through the first round of engineering comments from the town. And I'll try to keep this brief as I know we got one right behind me. It is an open space four-lot subdivision. You don't see all the open space here, but it is along the Nutsuch corridor as Mr. Bailey mentioned. And we certainly would be willing to work with the town or taking over ownership of that. Another thing that we have settled is an actual name for the subdivision with the public safety records. And it is now called Fortune Estates with a road named Serendipity Lane. As far as traffic comments do, we have supplied a traffic analysis by Traffic Solutions. And I don't think there's anything in the review comments that have come back in that I don't think we can work out with the staff, just looking for a little more detail and maybe a little more construction grade plans at this point. And I'd like to open up more questions if any of the members have them on any particular issue.
Okay, but before we turn it over to the board, this is also open for public discussion. So if there's anybody from the public that would like to discuss this particular issue, come up, give your name, address, and please keep your comments to within five minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Herb Ray, and I'm at eighty Mitchell Hill Road. My property and house abuts this proposed right away. I saw Jason. I had other questions before we got here, and some of them were answered by the proposed landscaping drawing that Jason gave you earlier when we first got here. I'll try to keep this brief too. You know, my concerns and my wife's concerns are obviously, you know, how this affects us, our property line, and obviously the laws of how this is going to affect us. Now, it doesn't show in this drawing, I don't believe, but it shows, I guess it's a question directly towards Jason. You know, it talks about 35 different trees placed along the roadway as the screening. And like I said, that's one of the biggest issues that I have is the screening and how the headlights are going to be shining out of the house. I know Jason, the drawing says, you know, 35 trees along that roadway. If 35 trees don't get you all the way to the end, basically, how tall? It doesn't say in this drawing how tall the trees and how wide they are. If the trees, 35 trees, don't make it all the way to the end, will you still finish it and go all the way to the end even if it takes 40 trees? The other thing that I just want to hit real quick is when will these trees and all of the buffering that we're going to, the screening that we're going to try to work with, will they be planted at the beginning of the project or at the end of the project? And if you start, the first lot, lot one is going to be the first one to be built. I think I'm right on that. But if the first one is lot one, and you guys start this, and then three years, four years down the road, you get to the last one, you know, do I wait four years before I get screened? Or is that going to be done, you know, during the construction of the road? I'd like to know that. On one of the letters that was addressed to Mr. Chase, it talked about a fence. And the fence, I guess the director had mentioned putting a fence on private property. Does that mean that the fence would have to go on my property? If you could kind of help us understand that, that part of it. I've been a part of enough projects over my career to see things like this get put into the plans. And then as the project goes on and the budget starts to get tighter for whatever reason, I've seen things like this kind of drop off, you know, and not get done or get abbreviated. I'd like to see this a part of the approval project. And I know I've seen in other board meetings that, and I have been a lot, and it's been a very, very good kind of learning process, but I know the visual part, you know, the trees, the flowers, even the height and width of signs get put into the approval process. So it doesn't get forgotten or, you know, to me, if it isn't written down and documented, it never happened and it never will. So I'm kind of hoping that this will be a part of the approval process. The road configuration, I don't know if that has changed at all, but the lot one house, I know the driveway, there was an issue with the driveway. And if that has changed in the location of the house, what's the distance from the edge of the first house, lot one, to the property line? Has that changed or is that still the same? I think the driveway configuration is a little bit different. I apologize. We just got back from vacation. I'm traveling all day today just to be here for this.
Hey, you're fine. You're fine, sir.
Okay. So we've had very little time to review this, but if that's changed at all, I'd like to know. And I know Jason spoke a little bit about the private property versus public, a private road versus a public road. On the letter to Mr. Chase, I think it was item number four and 23, 23 being the response, I think it was, and it kind of contradicted each other in reference to the private road versus non-private road. And I was just curious, who's going to maintain that road if things start to fall apart and erosion and that kind of stuff? Is that going to be the responsibility of the association? Is there going to be an association? Or is it going to be part of the town's responsibility to face that? Like I said, my biggest concern here is how it's going to affect me and our family and, you know, the integrity of that road, where it's going. And the infrastructure in that road is key. Because of this location, it's steep, it's the gradient, all of that is going to be a huge task just to keep that thing in place. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that this thing starts falling apart, I'm going to start making phone calls, and I just wanted to make that phone call too. It's very important that this gets done right. I've lived there for 26 years, and I've seen some real crazy stuff run off and snow. So that's kind of all I wanted to talk to the board.
Thank you.
Appreciate the chance, Steve. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Any men? I'll close. I'll put it up to the board.
My apologies. I missed the sidewalk, but...
Yeah, I should mention that there was a site walk for the public by the way, and some of us, we had the opportunity to get a firsthand look at the location. I'm sorry.
So I don't think I've heard a whole lot about the impressions that you got from that sidewalk. Can I just spend a quick second asking, is it steep? As steep as this profile?
Intensive.
And certainly, the Public Works Director's comments such that he almost washed his hands of anything to do with it. But the traffic analysis suggests that all of the average speed is about 50 miles an hour?
Yes.
That the site distances do meet the criteria?
For 50 miles an hour, yes. And the posted speed limit, which maybe you move point on the stretch of road, which is 35. And he did actually do a field study of, you know, 85% outspeed and all that.
As far as the landscape issues go and all that, that, as far as my memory goes, it's always a part of the approved plan.
Yes, and that landscape plan is preliminary. So what we would do is that would be bonded, so there would be money for that. Say the client, something happened, a death or something, that money would be in there in the escrow to have those installed by somebody else. So, and they would be part of the approval and a condition of approval that may be planned before, say, the first building permits issued or something like that.
So I think, if you don't mind.
So I think a couple of good points were made though in that the number of trees might, it's probably not as important as a number of trees so as to satisfy a certain goal. And you can, maybe, this is preliminary, right? So you'll be back again, and maybe you can come back with some different language and some different illustrations to show that. What is the reference to the fence and the private property issues?
So the fence is actually on the other side of Herb's property. And what it is, is a fence on top of where there's a cut section, probably will be a blast edge wall there. I put the fence there for safety. You don't want someone kind of wandering down by the hill and not knowing that they're stepping off, you know, over like an eight-foot drop. And so when we met with Public Works, they weren't happy if it was a private road. They don't care where the fence is. So it's back on within our property.
Okay. And as far as private road goes, tell me if I'm wrong, but that has to be built to town standards?
It needs to be built to town standards. You think the town would accept it?
So whether it's private or public, it's still, it's engineered and built to the same standard?
That's the expectation. And that's, we're still waiting for more information on, again, the intersection of this new road to Mitchell Hill Road. Given the steep grade of Mitchell Hill Road, it's challenging to intersect it in a way that meets town standards. Town standards is a 3% grade at the intersection. And so that's where we want to work with the applicant to really understand how's that intersection going to work to meet town standards and to safely accommodate ingress and egress.
So there's a bit more discussion on that matter?
Particularly on that.
And should you overcome all these challenges, the road would be a part of an association, I would believe?
Yes, there'll be a homeowners association, which will also include a road maintenance agreement, which they'll pay in escrow, and the fees will go to, you know, for a party to maintain the road, all those things that are associated with a private road.
So those are the folks that you'd call?
Yes.
If there was an issue with the road? And of course, just as a side note, not only does it make a lot of sense on many levels that a private road be built to the same standard as a town road, but we've seen over the last several years, private roads petition the town to accept them as public roads. And certainly, it's a lot easier for the town to consider such an endeavor when we know that the road is engineered to the highest standards of all roads.
This is to be built to the town standards, right?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, I was on the sidewalk, and the roadway is a challenge. Was a challenge. And it seems to me that the, just regarding the roadway, the biggest issue is making sure the praise is satisfied with their situation. So what you're saying basically, when we're going along that proposed road, your left side is going to be blasted, and you're going to have a fence along the top of that. But then there's going to be these rows of conifer trees. Is that all that's going to be there? Wasn't there some discussion about some sort of retaining wall possibly or something like that?
No, the retaining walls would happen on the, I don't know, lot four, as you go in.
In there?
Yeah, to sort of create like a backyard for the house, and there'd be some terracing going in there. And with respect to the individual locks, grading there is conceptual, as is the footprint and all that stuff, and we would propose that there's actually a condition of approval that every lot has to have a, an engineered stamped lot, a development plan, which would sort of ensure the intention of the design and the, sort of the safety of each lot as they go along, so. So what you have is, you know, you're coming in a hill, and you've got a blast on one side and a fill on the other, and then we would plant trees on the fill side.
Yep.
Maybe up even in the slopes to sort of provide the main screening that the grading would be of the area you're coming in right at the entrance, and we tried to put the number plantings up at the level of the, of that intersection.
Yes.
So as the block, the headlights.
That's why they're, they're set aside more or less, if not aligned with the others.
Yes.
Okay. And that's going to inhibit the headlights and things like that. What about runoff deals? They have a real concern about runoffs.
So this actually should, you know, if constructed as design, help, the only runoff that they're going to continue to see is coming down the ditch line in Mitchell Hill Road, and the rest is going to be picked up by curtain draining all the way up to the road and then piped down past their property and back towards the back of the client's, the applicant's proposed property.
And you'll be coming back with some more regarding the locks and everything?
Yep, yeah, whatever detail the town feels is needed can I provide.
I guess that's all I have before you go.
Yeah, I think I agree with my colleagues that, you know, another iteration of this is necessary, and hopefully you come and address most of these issues, and it looks like you're starting with that primary board is major, major concern about the roadway. If I was reading the sheets correct, when you pull your car up the hill, coming up to Fortune Estates, and you're looking to turn up to right, that slope, that grade, it looked to me for the first 30 feet, only about a foot, is that the intent?
So.
Yeah, so there's a flat spot. Build looking up to the right.
So you come up from your house, if you purchased one of these, if you come up the hill, if you come up at the town standard of 8%, and then what we've done is we flattened it out for about 30 feet to where I call the launch pad, and you look left and look right, you have a flat spot to accelerate from at the town minimum of 2.5%. And it just creates, it's like an extra 1, 2 seconds to get up and travel.
And then my other question, I might have overlooked this detail, but at the bottom, will there be any type of safety fence there to prevent, say, an icy road and a car coming down and going through the back of it into that guy's yard?
Like down here?
Yeah.
Well, so that's, this is all pretty flat right here?
That's okay, it's just the initial.
So, yeah, there'll be a, the, like downhill speed, you know, when you get to that flat spot, where they can get some traction.
Where does it start exactly? We'll look at the contours, but lot one's driveway, so for instance, are they trying to dig this?
The slope right here is, you've got about 80 feet of slope coming down at about 1%, and here's a low spot. So, I mean, we can shift this driveway as close to this turnaround as possible to still meet the town standards for having driveways within.
Just going to set 33 into the driveway is what I'm just asking you to consider. Outside of that, I'm all set for right now.
Thank you. I'm going to be very brief because I want to get the last applicant in before we close off tonight. I have a lot of concerns about this project, having seen it, to be honest with you. So I get to hear more about in the next line with the grading and the safety features that are involved in that, cars going in and out, the stormwater maintenance and how it will not affect their butter. When exactly, and not only what kind of landscaping, but when exactly, and is it going to be started and finished? What impact is the blasting going to have on their foundation and their structure? And guarantees that, you know, because I've been involved myself personally, where blasting was way off and still affected the foundation of my house, so I've got to be reassured on those lines. Need an answer to the question that was asked about the, how the road is going to be configured and what's the distance from lot one to their property line? I know objectively, it's going to take a lot to convince me to give approval to this particular project, having seen what I saw and the reservations of the town engineer, the Department of Public Works. So your next presentation has to go a long way towards answering a lot of these detailed questions to satisfy my line of thinking to approve this project. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. The last one, in consultation, I'm going to get that in before we go. It shouldn't take long.